Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Middleton Common Council. Tonight is October 7th, and it is 7 o'clock. I see we're all settling in. Budget went a little bit, went very well and was a robust discussion, so we're getting move, moving to do the call to order to the regular council meeting. Please requesting assistance for a roll call.
Alder Schaefer.
Here.
Alder Madden.
Here.
Alder Kalish.
Here.
Mayor Keon.
Here.
Alder Nelson.
Here.
Alder Myers.
Present.
Alder Henaro.
Here.
Alder Lorman.
Here.
Alder Crowe.
Here.
Great, moving on to public comments, do we have any?
Yeah, we have one in, in the room, Kevin Spitler.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about the budget, mostly because the concrete has been poor, as I've learned tonight, and in years past, and I don't, didn't want to wait until too late in the process to possibly make a difference. I'm here to express my disappointment that the planning department's strategic city climate roadmap does not seem to be making it into the budget. And I'm very concerned about that. At last week's meeting, Kelly Hilliard gave a very well reasoned rationale as to why that's needed at this time. And in case you didn't hear that presentation, she talks about the need for the city to have a clear, definite roadmap to help us meet our climate goals, which start as soon as 2030. And she, I'm going to quote a few things she said. What I need help with at this important moment, moment in our climate crisis is very specific strategic capital planning with engineering expertise across all of our assets, all of our buildings and equipment. I want to point out that this is a plan for all departments, so it's a citywide look at all our facilities and where we are with respect to decarbonizing their activities. And she says this would also include the golf course and the airport. And I, I think it's particularly important, now that I know Dr. Minogue is here tonight, to cite the success that the school districts had, which I'd mentioned before to the council. They have had a decarbonized roadmap prepared by a professional consulting firm, McKinstry. And that was approved a year and a half ago, and phase one of it was implemented in February, and they've already got solar up on seven of the schools since that timeframe, and expected to be completed by the end of the year. They put a, a charging infrastructure for buses and other vehicles in the district transportation center. And they've also done a lot of energy efficient measures, efficiency measures. And this will save them millions of dollars. And they've already saved a lot of money in the past with energy efficiency majors, so Kelly's asking for, and the planning department's highest priority request is $200,000 to get something similar in place for Middleton, because she's had to go through this piecemeal approach, which I pointed out in the email I sent to all of you in the last week, so I would hope that that could be looked at, particularly in light of some of the new funding that could be available that Bill has pointed out earlier tonight. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Kevin. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak this evening? Is there anybody online? Okay, thank you.
Moving on to presentation, a presentation from MCPASD or MCPSD Superintendent Dana Minogue into the front, thank you.
Good evening, I always appreciate the opportunity to come and just to share a little bit about our school district. I'm very pleased to be joined by one of our Board of Education members, Katie Frank. So if there are questions you might have for our board, she can certainly respond, so I'm happy to report, here we are in October. We've had a really smooth start to our school year. We had a lovely homecoming celebration a couple of weeks ago, I think the earliest homecoming we've had. And that included the second annual induction of members of our Hall of Fame at our athletic stadium, which was lovely. Some things we're celebrating, for the third consecutive year, we began our school year fully staffed. And that's no small feat, considering the staffing shortages that many school districts across the country are facing, so everything from our transportation department to food service, et cetera, we're fully staffed and we're really thankful for that. Our school district enrollment was up slightly. We're excited about all of the new construction that's happening in our boundaries, and we're just waiting for those school age kids to start moving into our district. Open enrollment seats, again, were part of our enrollment calculation this year. And we've been able to welcome families from outside of our district boundaries who want their children to come to school in our district, and that's been really, really helpful. Last week, we learned that of the 421 school districts in the state of Wisconsin, our current high school seniors who took the ACT examination last year, their composite score places us number two in the entire state. So we're only second to Whitefish Bay, so we're really, really pleased and proud about that, that's a system wide measure that we can all connect to and really feel good about. The niche.com ratings come out every year, they were just released last week, very pleased to let you know. For the sixth consecutive year, we are the number one school district in the greater Madison area, and that includes Middleton High School, number one high school, and Cromry Middle School right here in Middleton, the number one middle school. So thanks to staff, students, and families and our community. And when it comes to the things that we're focusing on in the school system, obviously, we're all about teaching and learning and well-being, we really have a whole child approach in our system that we continue to focus on. Resources are tight, and so we spend a lot of time with our Board of Education, making sure that we are placing resources closest to kids as possible, and then also engaging our community. So you're so kind to welcome me here twice a year, I do a world tour, and I present to anyone who will listen to me talk about our wonderful school system, so that certainly continues. Last time I was here, I think I shared with you our Cardinals Journey, it's our future preparedness framework that was built collaboratively with a large group of stakeholders last year. We've launched that in earnest this year, those are eight competencies we're trying to instill in students as they move through our district, and it has really taken hold in our system, and so we're super excited about that. When it comes to fiscal health and stewardship, we obviously take that very seriously. We are staying very close to federal funding, to state funding. This year, all federal funding that we were banking on has been delivered to us, but we're not sure what's going to happen going forward, so we're being very cautious in our budget planning. State funding as well, you are all very well aware. It hasn't kept up with inflation, so that means every year we're having difficult conversations about where we can find efficiency, et cetera. I won't talk about sustainability, because my friend, Mr. Spitler, already did that. So we're excited about our roadmap, and yes, there's a lot happening in the city of Middleton in the schools that are here, which is wonderful. We spent a lot of time putting out a lot of good news about our district on all of our social media outlets, so please give us a follow. And with that, we would welcome any comments or questions that you may have.
I'm definitely following, loving all of it, so thank you.
Great.
And is there questions? I, I will share, as you guys are thinking for a whole minute, that my children are in the middle and elementary school, and they have brought home a Cardinals Journey for me as a mom to be aware of this, and I'm really excited. So sharing with the president of the council, like, the cool thing is, is it talks about kindness, you know, like, being a good neighbor, that type of thing. And so raising that next generation to be those good neighbors is just really cool, in my opinion, so hopefully they'll join us being good leaders of the future, so. Any, anything else? Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to comment, I, last night was at the reception for the new Madison College president, who also happens to be a new neighbor of mine, she moved in down the street, so she, it's wonderful, and I told her this, it's wonderful to think that of all the places she could have picked in the Madison College area, she picked not just Middleton, but Whittlesey Road, how do you, how do you like that?
I recently went.
You met with her?
Yes, yes, and it's wonderful to know that she is a resident.
And, and I'm very excited, I'll be meeting with her too, she mentioned your conver, you were one of the 100 conversations that she's having, and she's excited about the prospect of partnering in some way.
We're taking a large team to Madison College in two weeks' time, yeah, so looking forward to that.
Thank you for that.
Very good, glad to hear. Anybody else have any quick questions? All right, we love what you're doing. Yeah, please keep going and just watch over those children for us.
I'll be back in about six months.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to proclamations for the National Band Books Week 2025. And I was working with Alder Crowe to make sure we are bringing this forward, so thank you. And if you'll come to the front and read the proclamation and let us know who you are.
Be happy to. My name is Stephanie Moritz, I serve on the library's Board of Trustees, and I'm very happy to be here this evening to read the proclamation on the, on behalf of the library and the Board of Trustees. And I brought with me a copy of a banned book, a well-worn copy of 1984 from the Middleton Public Library, just as an example of the types of books that we're talking about. Whereas the freedom to read is protected by our constitution and is fundamental to our democracy, and whereas Americans are capable of exercising critical judgment, recognizing propaganda and misinformation, and making their own decisions about what to read, and whereas intellectual freedom is essential to the preservation of a free society and a creative culture, and whereas censorship limits access to diverse ideas, hindering societal resilience and free expression, and whereas the American Library Association's Band Books Week encourages all to read for your rights, celebrating the freedom to choose and express opinions, and ensuring the availability of diverse viewpoints. Now therefore be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of Middleton and Mayor Keon hereby proclaim that the Middleton Public Library and City of Middleton celebrate National Band Books Week, October 5th to the 11th, 2025, and be it further resolved that all libraries are encouraged to acquire and make available materials representative of all the people in our society, and that the Middleton Public Library and City of Middleton encourage everyone to let freedom read. Thank you.
Is there?
Oh, and those bookmarks were passed out by my friend, Shukrona, and they do list actual banned books.
Like, I might have to, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept the proclamation.
Is there? Schaefer, okay. Is there any comments? Will you read them for me, since, yeah?
Who's, how many of these books are here, or have you read that are banned?
Let's maybe, Alder Lorman, will you read a column? Will you read a set?
Oh, how many I have read?
No, 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 just read maybe the one on the left, go ahead.
Oh.
Starting with Mockingbird.
Of these, I've done 13, Mockingbird, Color Purple, Anne Frank, Defy, Hunger Games, Equal Rights, Girl Interrupted, Out of Darkness, Catcher in the Rye, Blue Eyes, Kite Runner, Fahrenheit 451, Blamer, CRT, This Book is Gay, Beloved, Bean Jazz, Hate You Give, Malcolm X, 1984, Speak, Defy, defend, sorry, Mouse, The Giver, The Virgin, Gender Queer, Animal Farm, Prank, Lord of the Flies. I can't see that, is that Melissa? Melissa, 19 Minutes, Gender Identity, Wicked, Ulysses, Actar, Handmaid's Tale, Felix Ever After, Lawn Boy, Pose, All Boys Aren't Blue, Palestine, Water for Elephants, Pan, Go Ask Alice.
Thank you. Just so you guys know, I, I had my son read Animal Farm last summer, so I must be doing something right. And I know the rest of you have read many of these books, my assumption is you have, so thank you for supporting our libraries and doing good things. With that, all those in favor of approving the proclamation, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Bring the book you have with and the proclamation, and let's get a picture.
Chance, you want to make sure your thing's legible? Use your tags right over it.
It's a nice shirt.
We're gonna hop in. Yeah, maybe let's get a little bit hang in.
I guess I didn't, but it doesn't surprise me.
Right, right.
We'll keep learning. I don't know about Water for Elephants.
Moving on to the approval of the consent agenda, is there a motion?
I'd move to separate four for discussion, there were changes in committee. I'd request four separated.
So are you requesting approval of one through three and five?
Yes.
Excellent, is there a second?
Lorman will second that, thank you.
And any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving consent agenda items one through three and number five, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to consent agenda and item number four, is there a motion?
Sure, on behalf of finance and personnel, this was slightly amended. Bill?
All we did was change the 12.5% escalation rate for the rent. We changed it to be equal to the C, Consumer Price Index increase over the preceding five years.
Any other comments? Okay, adding in when you, when you, not you guys, but when city staff speak to, it's T-Mobile from my recall, yeah, T-Mobile. We have had complaints of dead, like dead zones. Yeah.
Yeah.
Particularly at Branch and University, so please let them know that they're getting zero bars and they can't call 911 if necessary. So that's, that's the major place, but there might be other spots if no, but that was the major intersection. So if that could be brought up, so that as we're moving forward, we can provide good service to our residents, it'd be much appreciated.
Seems to be problematic.
That too, yeah. That was what I brought up to constituents when they called, and said that Verizon worked with us last year, I think it was, when we, they had, it was close to century going towards the buildout of the housing, and they said that they don't, T-Mobile users don't have as many problems on that side, so it's probably the cell tower coverage. But I don't attempt to know those types of things, but much appreciated to take those comments. And with that, all those in favor of approving the lease agreement from the consent agenda with the change from 12.5% to the CPI, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously.
I made a mistake, missed, I made a mistake, item number five, committee, tourism committee changed their date to the 20th, 21st. So the record should just reflect that, the meeting is on the phone. I don't know if that's important or not.
Thank you for that update, and it's a little out of order, but we just finished the consent agenda, so I will take that comment, and I greatly appreciate it. Okay, anything else? Just double checking, okay, we're good. Moving on to budget, direction regarding publication of the notice for the 2026 budget public hearing. And I'm going to look to staff for direction. I know you're asking for direction, but since we had an hour of discussion that you're looking for.
Be a motion to direct staff to post in the newspaper the public hearing on November 4th with the budget that was recommended for publication by the finance committee at their meeting prior to this.
Much appreciated.
This is Henaro, I'll make that motion.
Second that.
Any comments?
Just, could I have a repeat of the motion, just, I wasn't exactly hearing Administrator Gatto.
Yeah, it's a motion to publish in the newspaper a notice for a public hearing on the 26th budget for the next, for the council meeting on November 4th, utilizing the budget document that was discussed and forwarded on by the finance committee at their previous meeting prior to this.
Thank you.
And I want to add a clarification, we are still deliberating the budget, we didn't get very far into the capital projects, and so there's a lot we still need to discuss, but we were able to go forward with some changes for the publication without hearing.
All right, any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the most, of approving the motion, including the posting in the newspaper for November 4th, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to resolution 202546, requesting exemption from Dane County Library tax, is there a motion?
This is Alder Crowe, I'll make the motion that we get an exemption from the Dane County Library tax for the Middleton Library.
Is there a second?
Myers, I'll second.
Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving resolution 202546, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to committee appointments, appointment of Lee Schwartz to Workforce Housing Committee and Lisa Quam to Tourism Commission.
This is Henaro, I move approval of those two appointments.
Is there a second?
Schaefer will second.
Any comments?
Just that I worked with Lee Schwartz on sustainability, and he's just an excellent committee member, so I'm very pleased to see that he's back in action for us.
All those in favor of approving the appointments of Lee Schwartz to Workforce Housing and Lisa Quam to Tourism, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to committees, commissions, and boards by council members and mayor. Any updates? Alder and Ira?
I just wanted to acknowledge the end of Week Without Driving. I hope everybody was able to try at least one trip that they normally would take by car, doing it by foot or bike or transit. I was able to make events or comments at the kickoff event that involved elected officials and other partners who participated in Dane County's planning of Week Without Driving. And I highlighted the anniversary, the third anniversary of our Complete Streets policy, which was this past Saturday, also known as Star's Holiday. And I also acknowledged that there's a deficiency in the policy, and that it focuses solely on the outcomes and didn't kind, didn't contemplate the process of getting there, so that's something that actually a lot of people, resonated with people because they had the same experience. And just for the record, I did wind up driving on Tuesday last week, because my husband had to go to urgent care for a knee injury that matches my experience in the first year we did Week Without Driving, when the very first day, my dog ate a mushroom and I had to take him to the vet. But the rest of the time last week, I either took transit, or walked, or sat in a cabin in western Wisconsin enjoying the peace and quiet, so. That was my, my personal report on my Week Without Driving.
Well, and just to piggyback a little bit on that, is this coming Monday, October 13th, is the very, not the first ever, but the first ever of this term, joint meeting between the pedestrian, bike, and transit committee and Public Works. So we'll be discussing the active transportation plan, as well as ways to improve and implement our Complete Streets program. I'm looking forward to that, I think it will be a pretty lively discussion, based on what I know of the members of those two committees. Tune in, it should be fun.
Delightful, I'll, I'll be watching.
Just a report on Star's Hollow Days, Mayor was kind enough to come and help us judge the cast look-alike contest. Once again, this is the third year we've had this Star's Hollow Day. Who freaking knew, I mean, it was just so well attended, so crowded, great downtown. I went into Regal Find after the contest judging, and I couldn't get in, it was so full, the store was so full of people who had come from Stonehalls. Yeah, knitting marathon, Miss Patty's Dance School Ballet, they had little kids doing ballet. They had Luke's Coffee, they had cookies with all the Gilmore Girls stuff on them. It was just phenomenal, so kudos to Jo Lynn, our new placemaking person, she just did absolutely phenomenal job. So I'm telling you guys, start watching the show, it'll be a cool thing next year when you come as one of the cast members. That's all mine.
It's beautiful, thank you, it was, that was really fun. With that, it sounds like we are.
Oh, my apologies.
Alder Myers?
Yeah, I just for Public Works, I'd really encourage members of common council to take a tour of the Middleton Operations and Middleton Recycling Center. There is a line item in the budget for concrete spalling repair. I took a tour today, and it was pretty eye-opening. There is, there's, well, there are significant cracks and spalling near some load-bearing walls and poles. So I would encourage everyone here, before you vote on that budget, to go and view the Middleton Operations Center and Middleton Recycling Center, because these are repairs that only get, get more expensive over time with additional freeze thaw cycles. And if we don't do it, if we don't do some of them this year, it'll be potentially two years before we get a chance to do that, so please, on behalf of Public Works, go look at our great opportunity for preventative maintenance.
Can you say a quick question, can I ask Alder Myers? A, what is spalling?
It's the deterioration of the concrete caused by freeze thaw cycles, so what happens
Yeah.
is the water infiltrates.
Yeah.
It freezes. It freezes, then it thaws, and it cracks the concrete, so eventually you can end up replacing the entire floor.
Gotcha. And then, yeah, yeah, like the street. And then, secondly, does one have to make an appointment to get a tour? How does one get a tour?
Good question.
That would be a reach out to Brian, and he'll set you up with Brad, and Brad will take you on the tour.
Thank you.
Great questions, and thanks for the update, Alder Myers. With that, we are adjourned.